We will begin with the flag salute.
My president is to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have translation tonight from Vivian Rodriguez. Vivian?
Si, muy buenas noches y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del distrito escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias. Thank you. Okay. Gracias. Also, we have headsets for the hearing impaired as noted on our screen. If anybody needs that, you can let us know and we will supply them. Okay. That brings us to introductions, proclamations, presentations, and/or recognitions. Do we have any tonight?
Well, due to our pressing business tonight, there are no presentations this evening. I want to make sure that we...do we have a student report though from San Marcos? We do. Good. Can we go right to that then?
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. I've a lot to share about San Marcos, so I'll try to keep it as concise as possible. Mock Trial was awarded co-champions with DP, and right now they're in the playoff to determine who's going to the state championship. This past Saturday, our baseball team took part in a very historical event, the first game in history where two girls were starting pitchers in a boys' baseball game. Ozzale Sailors pitched against Martina Simentella from Birmingham High School. It was a great occasion for Title IX, and the event showed that high school sports is a great avenue to promote equal access.
That seems particularly appropriate that you would announce that today on International Women's Day. So, thank you.
You're very welcome. During February, we had Diversity and Equality Awareness Week. We had the Rachel's Challenge Assembly, which helps promote making a difference in the community by doing small acts of kindness. Also, our Speak Against Hate Club ran many different activities during lunchtime. We also had our disabled speaking panel talk about their lives and how being disabled affects them. It was very moving and powerful to hear their stories. In the beginning of February, we inducted seven members into the San Marcos Athletic Hall of Fame, which included Mark Workington, who was an Olympic swimmer in the 2008 Olympics. Our Kids Helping Kids event was a great success, and we helped raise over $160,000 that will be donated to various charities locally and as well as internationally. There's a new document called What is the Electric Car about people making effort to produce eco-friendly cars. A part of the feature includes our auto shop and their work with an all-electric Porsche, which they hope to have completed soon. Speaking of movies, this Thursday, we are showing a movie at 7:00 PM called Race to Nowhere, which sold out the Arlington earlier in February. It is about a call to action for families, educators, and policymakers to challenge current assumptions on how to best prepare the youth of America by becoming healthy, bright, and leading citizens. All proceeds go to the San Marcos ASB. This past Saturday, the DP Jazz Festival, San Marcos was first in the heavy division and overall festival champions. Eleventh grader Aaron Dutton received Best Zellist as well. We are very proud of all of our jazz musicians. Marquette's won the California State Jazz Championship in Hip-Hop and took first in Regionals in Palm. They will compete in the USA Dance Nationals later this month. The Royal Blue Review was at the end of February, which is our longest-running talent show at San Marcos. It was very exciting seeing all of the different talents demonstrated onstage. This Friday is the Second Annual Broadway Musical Marathon, being held in the auditorium from 12:30 to 8:30 PM. It is a fundraiser to help the vocal department go to various festivals, including the Heritage Festival in New York at the end of this month. Last year, they completed 116 songs, and this year, they hope to exceed over 150 songs in eight hours. We have ASB elections this month, and we have a lot of students running, so it'll be a very exciting election. Senior Prom is April 30th at the Polo Fields in Carpinteria, and the Spring Play, Me and My Girl, is at the beginning of May, and like always, our performing department puts on quite a show, and it will not disappoint. Last year was our 50th graduation class, and this June, the first graduating class will have their 50th high school reunion, and it will be opening a time capsule that was put in the cornerstone marker of the school, and we will have a ceremony with this year's graduating class. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I did not have your name.
Andre Rivera.
Andre Rivera. Excellent. Thank you. Senior?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much. Okay, Dr. Sarver, that brings us to the superintendent report.
Well, good. Tonight's board meeting is voted almost entirely to our school district's response to the state budget crisis, and I know we've said some of these things before, but I want to make sure that these are well-understood. Our required multi-year projections show that we need to make $10 million in budget cuts in order to preserve the fiscal solvency of our school district. No one wants to make $10 million in budget cuts, especially after already cutting $20 million in the last few years. Tonight, we have some $22 million in ideas on the table about what could be done, and I have confidence that the board will make good decisions about how to prioritize these cuts. We also have hopes of being able to rescind many, if not all, of the cuts. We're pursuing unification of the elementary and the secondary districts, and we're doing so at top speed, but top speed still means that we're two months out from getting the final answer. That will bring the elementary district to a higher revenue limit. It will bring the secondary district to a higher revenue limit. So, that means serious money to our district. We're also working to get the governor's proposed ballot initiatives on the June ballot so that voters can decide whether to extend current taxes, although we all read this morning that the governor says he does not have the votes from the Republican side in either side of the Assembly or Senate to put the initiatives on the ballot yet. We hope that will happen. We're meeting with Stoker's office tomorrow, Thursday, excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry. Mike Stoker from Tony Strickland's office, Thursday. Thank you. Meanwhile, a lot of layoff notices are going out, and the sad part of that is that many of these are people who have worked in the district many years. It's heartbreaking, and since we are moving quickly on unification, but we'll still not know for a couple of months, that means that people will have their layoff notices, and will have to wait probably until the middle of May before they get a final word on rescinding the notices. The state budget crisis is not fixed, and it will probably be with us for a number of years to come. As you know, cuts to K-12 education over the past few years have been deeper than cuts in any other sector in the state budget. Public education is again faced with huge cuts if the governor's ballot initiatives to extend taxes are not placed on the June ballot and are not successful. We recently saw an article on redevelopment agencies, and I'd like to state what's at issue again on redevelopment agencies. I need to clarify the effect of redevelopment agencies like the Santa Barbara Downtown Redevelopment Agency on the school district. Redevelopment agencies, like our downtown RDA, hold back property tax money that would normally flow to school districts and to counties and other special districts like mosquito abatement districts. In fact, the biggest part of that money would flow to, of course, the city, and then to the county, then to school districts, and then to the other districts, and this is ostensibly to fight blight in usually an urban downtown area. In using property tax revenue for other purposes, it reduces the property tax support for schools, and if schools don't get that property tax, then guess who pays for it? The state does. So, whatever is held back by a redevelopment agency is made up for at the state level, and there was a time when the state had enough revenue, and that wasn't a problem. That's no longer the case, and it hasn't been the case for a couple of years. Most school districts are revenue-limit districts, and the state fills that gap between what property taxes bring into the school district and what the state needs to pay for. Some school districts are basic aid districts. In fact, many of the school districts right around us are basic aid districts, and that simply means that they have more than that level just in property taxes coming to them, and they get all of those property taxes. Our elementary district is currently a basic aid district. Our elementary district was a basic aid district this last year, and it would have been a basic aid district years earlier had it not been for the downtown redevelopment agency. Last year, we calculated what the amount was that the district had actually already lost, and that amount by last spring was $6 million. The district is again losing money this year. We haven't calculated that amount. Now, we did ask for some help from the redevelopment agency, and we did not get it. In fact, we need to rebuild our maintenance and operation. It's in ancient facilities out here, and we need to move that warehouse to some other location. We wanted to move it out of the downtown area. Not getting that help, we will probably be forced with building it right here on this parking lot, on Santa Barbara and De La Guerra, which ironically is about one block away from City Hall. But we'll see where that goes. So much for issues about state budgets and redevelopment agencies. Let's spend just a few moments on what really matters most, and that's students. You heard a great student report from San Marcos. We were especially pleased with their engineering team and their recent victory. Our students took top honors at the county science fair, and we will be inviting them to come in and share their displays after they compete at the state level. Students from La Colina Junior High, San Marcos High School, and Santa Barbara Junior High swept the top three places in the county spelling bee. They will be headed to the state spelling bee on May 14. Yes, we'll try to get those travel requests in advance. And the list of district events and performances that is being updated daily is on the side table in the back, and board members, you have it on the dais. Copies are before you, and events are posted on our website. If we can catch that website on the screen, please. Finally, tonight, Monroe Principal Brent Milholland announced his retirement today. He joined our elementary district in July 2003, and we thank him for his work on the Monroe School campus. We recently received the following comment about Brent from someone else in the know, which reflects the caliber of work he has done as a principal, and that comment was, "Monroe has one of the most smoothly-running special education departments right now, and that is due in large part to Brent's leadership." So, we thank him for that, and I'm sure you'd be happy to hear that. Well, that concludes our superintendent's report tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. I want to echo your sentiments that we certainly thank Brent for his many years of service to the district and for the wonderful job that he has done for us at Monroe. So, that moves us to comments from the board. Are there any comments that or correspondence that board members would like to share? Mrs. Deacon?
Yes, I would like to share some information about the superintendent search because we met on Friday with the team that's helping us move forward on our search, and I wanted to make sure that everyone knows that next Monday night, we're going to be holding two public forums, one in Spanish at the Luke Theater at Santa Barbara Junior High and one in English at San Marcos High School in the auditorium at 7:00. This is Monday, March 14. And both of those days, the 14th and the 15th, will also be interviewing community groups, getting input from them as we develop our profile for the superintendent's search. There's also an online survey, and I believe that the website is up here down at the bottom of the screen, and we strongly recommend and encourage everyone to give us feedback about the qualities that you would like to see in a new superintendent, and there's a place for open comment and feedback, so we would really appreciate people participating in that. The word's gone out to the media. It's going out in flyers to the elementary schools, to all the parents. Postcards like these will be arriving in people's mailboxes tomorrow, inviting them to participate, parents in our secondary districts. And we're also asking for student input. So, we're gathering as much input as we can, and I hope everyone will share with us the opportunity to get the word out so that we get a lot of great information on this as we move forward on our superintendent's search. Thank you.
And I would just like to add that while the two meetings will be conducted primarily in the languages that are identified, the English, the meeting at San Marcos High School will be conducted in English, the meeting at the Luke Theater at Santa Barbara Junior High will be conducted in Spanish, but there will be translation available, so if somebody prefers to go to the other site just for location and for convenience, they will be able to give input at whichever site they attend. So, thank you. Mrs. Parker?
It's actually been a very busy two weeks, but I'm going to be very brief since we have so much to go on later on the agenda, and just bring up one thing, and that is that Ms. Limon and I were at a reunion this past week for the Latino Achievement Summit that we held last August, and it was moderated by Just Communities, but we have so many community partners on that. It was fabulous to see the staff at Dos Pueblos McKinley and Santa Barbara Junior High that are still very involved in a process that was started several months ago, and really in some of their cases, several years ago. And I think Ms. Limon and I are both really looking forward to some of those suggestions coming forward to the board when we look at our annual indicators and our focus goals for next year.
Great. Thank you very much. Ms. Limon?
So, I spent my weekend in Austin, Texas with fellow school board members, and one of the things that was discussed and that I know will come up throughout the night is the importance, because a lot of school districts, not just in California, Arizona, New Mexico, Illinois, New York, you name it, are going through some situations, but the importance of making sure that the entire community knows that our concerns should be heard at the state level. And so, we actually had a Texas Assembly member talk to us about that importance, and so I just want to echo and remind everyone that that's something we should keep in mind tonight and in the future, that our state elected officials also need to hear about it, about our concerns and the importance of saving public education funding. So.
Thank you, Ms. Limon. Mr. Heron?
Just two things. One, I happened to go down to the Faulkner Gallery this week, the opening of the grandparents exhibit. Every single inch of every wall is covered with children or students, paintings, drawings, photographs of their vision of their grandparent or actual grandparent. It's very emotional, so if you get a chance to go by the Faulkner Gallery, it's well worth the time. That's by the library. I also spent Saturday at a conference put on by CSBA. Mrs. Parker and myself are going through eight all-day Saturday sessions over a two-year period. I'm missing my little...we'll have to share that. And it just so happens that one on Saturday was on finance, and so I spent the day crunching numbers, which made it great for tonight, I can tell you that. But there were about 20 of us from different school districts bordering Santa Barbara up north, down south, and what I learned there, which will be a topic tonight, is that our school district is that, I mean, we are the leanest, meanest, finding machine there is compared to anybody else in almost every category. We just spend less than other school districts. So, it's an eye-opener when you see the actual numbers put together comparing school districts and how much they spend on what categories. Thank you to the staff, because we do...our staff does a very, very good job crunching these numbers, and I think Mr. Smith and Mrs. Jete deserve a lot of credit for that. But it's good to spend the time doing that. So, I really thought it was a good session. This is the fifth out of eight. We have three more to go, thank goodness.
Thank you, Mr. Heron. Well, I'll just briefly comment on two things. The first one is on Friday, I was at a retreat in which we were viewing a video that compared the per-student spending that California used to maintain in the '60s and '70s when we were really the, you know, sort of the star of the country in terms of our educational, our K-12 educational system, as compared to what we spend now and how low we are consistently sort of ranking among or neck and neck with Mississippi, which has long held a reputation, at least of serving public education very poorly. And so, it's certainly been a sad decline for the state of California in terms of our per-pupil spending. So, that kind of emphasizes or reiterates Ms. Limon's comment about the need for us to address this at a state level. But on a more positive note, I just wanted to compliment Mr. Smith because I was attending a meeting of the Adelante Charter Board last night, and they, of course, were struggling with their budget, much as we are. They have to also make some cuts to their operational budget, and one of the things that they stated very firmly was how much they appreciated the work that you have spent and the numbers and memos that you have sent to them, because they feel that while the news may sometimes be dire, it's very clear. They made a point to say that it is understandable, and so they felt very fortunate to have that input in the course of making their decisions that they have to make. So, I just want to pass that along to you because it was very complimentary, and I know you deserve it. So, with that, we will move forward and move on to announcements of close-session action. We have no action to report out this evening. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we do. Thank you. We do have action to report out on B3, and that is that the board confirmed the appointment of two new principals to replace our departing principals at Santa Barbara High School and at San Marcos High School. The appointment is of current assistant principal at San Marcos High School, Ed Barron, to take over the principalship there. So, yes, and for our current Santa Barbara Junior High School principal, John Beckio, to replace the outgoing Mark Caprito at Santa Barbara High School. So, we congratulate them on the appointments, and we are happy to have them, and both of those were confirmed by a 5-0 vote. So, thank you.
Madam President, just technically, I'd like the word in the record to be ratified, those two.
We ratified them. Thank you. Okay, so that was our closed-session announcement. Now, we will move on to public comments, and I believe we have a number here. I just wanted to say, I want to remind you, for those of you speaking at this point, this is the time at which to speak on board business that is not on tonight's agenda but does fall within the purview of the Santa Barbara School District Board, or items that are on the consent agenda, which will be acted on all at once.
We have four public comments this evening. The first is Dave Odell, who is speaking on the consent agenda item D-12, approval of the MOU with the Santa Barbara Soccer Club. So, that's Dave Odell, followed by Kenneth Locke, followed by Lauren Mason, followed by Kate Smith.
So, if we could ask you to come forward to the podium, please?
President Cordero, thanks for having us. I'm Dave Odell, Chair of the Santa Barbara Soccer Club. I have with me Abe Jehotamy, Athletic Director at San Marcos, Darsha Stebbins, who's part of our team, as well as Lori Bacon, Tim Baumstieg, Head Soccer Coach at UCSB, and Rich Ridgway, who's a parent at San Marcos, who's been helping us with this project. What we're here for is the Santa Barbara Soccer Club has partnered with the school Booster Club in raising all the money to put in a new turf field at San Marcos High School. And so, the partnership will allow the school to reap the benefits of a new turf field, reduced maintenance costs, more time on the field because we don't have to worry about rain days. The soccer club benefits because it's a great project for the community. We're going to have the opportunity to use the field when it's not being used by the school. We, the soccer club, real quickly, we serve over 500 youth year-round, from ages nine to 19, 500 families, most of which, the majority of which, are students in the Santa Barbara school districts. So, we're here to answer any questions that you have on the consent item, but most of all, want to thank you for getting us this far. We have a little bit more money to raise, but we're well over halfway, and we're excited to hopefully get the project started in June.
Thank you very much.
Could I ask Mr. Hackney a question on that? Did you ever get Page Four of that contract for us?
I'm sorry, do we ever get Page Four?
You said Page Four was missing from our folder?
It's on the dais.
Oh, I didn't see it. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I guess there are no questions, but thank you very much. I appreciate it. Kenneth Locke, followed by Lauren Mason, followed by Kate Smith. You have three minutes.
Well, Mr. Locke's coming up. You may note that you have revised attachments to D-12, D-13, and those are on the back table as well.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I'm here once again to promote holistic health for the community. I spoke before the city, and I mentioned to them that in a community that's not holistically healthy, it's good to introduce things that are holistically healthy. It would be interesting to get a response from the kids in relation to their holistic health, so to ask, give them a questionnaire, possibly. I don't know if you guys have the ability to gauge their health, holistic health. Are these kids holistically healthy? I'm bringing, as I mentioned, education into the 21st century, reforming it into the interdisciplinary perspective. And when that education is up and running, all teachers are all integrated, and we can actually understand that education in relation to holistic health. So, it kind of brings everybody on to the kind of same page. When it comes to the 21st century, I feel I've been raised up as a teacher healer. So, if currently, if the teachers would like to continue in this profession, I would suggest that they look into holistic health and become as holistically healthy as they possibly can be, and then pass this knowledge along to their students. This is kind of how we'll go about business in the 21st century. Just wanted to pass this along to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Mason.
Good evening. First, I would like to congratulate Ms. Limon and Mrs. Parker. I never had a chance to congratulate you on your elections, but congratulations. First, I would like to share with the board my children's latest report cards. My son Alistair's, one grade out of six subjects. My daughter Brittany's, zero grades out of six subjects. I've come before this board before and asked, why are you sending out eight report cards every year when these are four of the report cards you send out every year? If you're not going to put grades on the progress report cards, why don't you save the money and send out only the midterm and semester report cards? Next, I'd like to go on and ask, has anyone on the board looked at the district's Measure H Oversight Committee? H Oversight Committee website? If you had, you would find that the Oversight Committee has never, and I'll repeat, never, discussed ninth-grade math class ratios, even though that's one of the things they're supposed to discuss as an Oversight Committee for Measure H. You would also find that, on average, only four out of the seven Oversight Committee members attend the meetings. And according to the bylaws, at least one and as many as three members should be replaced right now as I speak to you due to lack of attendance. One member has only attended one meeting since April of 2009. And one meeting was canceled due to a lack of a quorum. Tonight, I'm notifying the board and the administration that I want to serve on this committee. The district has my contact information. Please give me a call. I'll come right in and fill out the paperwork and serve on this committee. Finally, I believe that you should never ask someone to do something that you're not willing to do yourself, and I also believe in leading by example. And it was because of that that when I ran for the board last November, I stated that I would not accept the $400 monthly stipend that board members receive.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Kate Smith?
Board, we'll follow up with Mr. Mason on the progress reports. My understanding was that they only went out under certain circumstances, so we'll rectify that. And as we reported to you in our last meeting, when we designated Measures Q and R Committee Members, we knew that we would have more openings on H and I, and we're coming forward with replacements for all those who apply for H and I. So we're currently advertising that.
I was also under the understanding we'd gotten an opinion from the Measure H Committee about math class sizes.
We have had discussions.
We have had discussions, and I don't believe the minutes have been approved, and that's why they're unpublished or on the website. And also, just to correct, the draft minutes do not show any opinion.
President, President Cordero, members of the Santa Barbara School District, this is bizarre. I am the happiest public comment of the evening. I'm announcing my daughter's 22nd birthday, and all of her teachers, friends, and angels are invited. Emily Rose Smith is a celebrated student in the Santa Barbara School District, and last year's party, her 21st birthday, was a memorable bash. This year, I have been so foreclamped by Emily's accident. She fractured her ankle on the mountain the day after it snowed all day, and she's in a cast in a wheelchair. So I'm handing out her invitations quite late. This is the RSVP. Just send it in because last year, only two people RSVP'd, and I had 80 people at my house. Help me out here. It's this Saturday, so all of you who know Emily, please come to our home and celebrate my daughter. Last year, I was honored by the presence of Ed Herron, the school board president and our neighbor. And I want to publicly thank him for his assistance the last two years, as I have fought for my daughter's educational rights and for due process. Once again, I am in conflict with the school district. I needed help with my daughter's emergency, so I asked to speak to anyone, anyone in special ed, and I was written a letter, certified mail, that I had to write my letter to Robin Sowalski, and I would receive a reply within 60 days. I am asking that we strive as a community for practical wisdom, compassionate community, and restorative justice. Please know that, again, for my daughter's birthday, I'm having a book drive, so I'd like to let you know that there is a book at Chaucer's called The New Cool, and it's about experiential learning. It's Aristotelian. For that, which we need to learn to do, we learn by doing. And it features Dos Pueblos' amazing teacher, Amir, and his engineering process. Also is the book Legal Abuse Syndrome, and The Three Questions, the book that people bought for last year. My daughter read it at her birthday party. And one that's distributed through Chaucer's at no charge, Hope in a Dark Time.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. That moves us to the acceptance of donations.
I'll move to accept with gratitude. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. That brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any items that members would like to pull from the consent agenda, noting that we have revised attachments for item D-12 and D-13?
I just have three comments, if I may.
Yes, Ms. Herron?
On D-4, the Safe School Plan, there is a stack of them in the back over here, and I think there's another stack up here. And I guess I would just like to request Mr. Sumter to review them, especially Section 3. Section 3 is the one where the schools give their goals. And if you read them and compare them this year to last year, some of the, most of the wording in the samples I took is verbatim with just a time change. I think more emphasis should be put on Section 3 and not just repeat the same language year after year. On D-12, no, excuse me, D-13, I just want to confirm with Mr. Hetjuk that there is language in there that protects us. It's not validation language, but it's language that puts parameters on what happens if something goes wrong, and that's in there. I'm happy it's in there. Thank you very much. And on D-14, the approval of Architects, one of the architects being approved is PMSM Architects. And I would like to disclose that up until August of 2008, when I filed for school board, I was on their advisory committee. But I've had no contact with them since August of 2008, so I don't feel there's any conflict.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Herron. Ms. Lamone?
I just have one question. In item D-9, it states that Alameda Schools would be the, I think, fiscal agent. Is that correct? It's supposed to say Alameda Schools? Whereas the Alameda County Superintendent of Schools has agreed to act as the treasurer responsible fiscal agent?
Correct.
That's correct. Okay.
Joint Powers Authority, so they're acting as the fiscal agent.
Thank you.
Since we're asking quick questions, I also had a question on D-9. Under fiscal impact, it says not applicable. I'm assuming that's what NA means, but there is a page in here regarding fees, and I asked Mr. Tangway, but I, probably too late.
I have the answer to that question. Actually, SPUR Remax started really buying natural gas on the spot market, and that's how they actually started with school districts. So when I read you this answer, you'll kind of get it here. On natural gas, the fee is 1.8 cents per therm for core and 0.9 cents per therm for non-core. On gas, the admin fee is built into the price paid by districts. For electricity, the admin fee paid by vendors is 1.5 mils per kilowatt hour. And for E-rate, the admin fee is 3% of project cost, again, paid by vendors. So a lot of it is backloaded onto the vendors.
So we're going to save money doing this?
Yeah, we will definitely save money.
Thank you.
Okay, with all of our questions answered, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The entire consent agenda is approved by a vote of 5-0. We have none to come back to.
Thank you.
Okay. So that brings us to item E1 on our action agenda, to approve the proposal to continue the outreach coordinator and consultant position through the end of the 2011-2012 school year.
Well, at our last board meeting, board members expressed an interest in continuing this position through the end of this year and into next year, and we have a proposal before you to continue the position then through the end of this next school year. So it's not an ongoing position at this point in time. It would be one-time cost. And making the presentation is Marlon Sumter, who's our Director of Student Services.
Thank you, members of the board, Dr. Sarvis. You have in front of you the proposal to continue this position, affectionately known as a youth outreach worker, a shorter title than what's in the title of this agenda item. But Ismael Huerta has served in that position very faithfully over the time of the position, but as you know, the funding for that, the funding source for that position has been depleted. So if it is your desire to continue that position, then we would need your approval for the funding to do so. And as Dr. Sarvis mentioned, the proposal is to complete this year and then carry it through next school year, meaning the 2011-2012 school year. In your materials that you have in front of you, you also have a copy of the evaluation report that was conducted by Dr. Victor Rios out of UCSB and his team. You may have seen that previous to tonight, but that is there for your review again and just maybe to make special note of some of the summary highlights on page four of the successes of the program during the time prior to this evaluation. We are also in the middle of reviewing data and information received recently since that this report was made. We are working with Dr. Rios again and his team to help us conduct that evaluation to see the successes since this last one was done. So it is being recommended that the board approve the proposal to continue the outreach coordinator and consultant position through the 2011-2012 school year.
Ms. Cordero, because it didn't make it to the cover sheet on the agenda, I know that the fiscal impact is shown on the attachment as $95,047, and that should also be shown on the cover sheet so that the public is aware of that as well. So I'm stating it so that everyone knows that it's a $95,000 impact.
And that would come from general funds?
General funds, that's right.
Thank you. Okay, board members, questions or comments? Mrs. Parker?
Quick question on that. I mean, in the past, the funding has come from outside donation and the People Retention Block grant. I know that the People Retention Block grant is Tier 3. Is it, I mean, would the funding actually be coming from the People Retention Block grant or directly from the general fund?
I think, depending on what the board does tonight, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other, so I would just assume it's the unrestricted general fund.
Okay. Well, I'll just start off my comments on this in that this position was really born out of a crisis that happened at this point almost four years ago now, and an ongoing concern in the district with violence, youth violence, how that pertains to our students and what we can do to help our students, to mitigate the issues both within our schools and outside in the larger community. And one of the things that kept coming up again and again was how, at one point, there had been a lot of great work being done, both in our district and in our community. But with that great work, issues with youth violence had ebbed, and then the funding dried up for it. And then naturally, it cycled back up again. One of my big concerns in watching this whole process is that, given the amount of budget cuts that we have to go through and how this is just a terrible time in state economy and in our own district, that we might be forced, through the budget situation, to start a program, and then if it's successful, suddenly drop it. And I really don't think that that is wise for our district to do. I've watched this position essentially start from a rather vague idea and develop over time. I've watched the survey results come in, and I've seen the work that's been done. And to me, it's not about the person that's doing the job, it's about having this resource available for our students, our most at-risk students in our high schools. And so I will support us continuing this position through this year and continuing into next year, and again, with constant monitoring. But I think it is so important because otherwise, we will be right back where we were four years ago.
Thank you, Mrs. Parker. Would the board like to continue with board comments, or would we prefer to take public comment at this time? Public comment? Okay, let's move forward with the public comment then. Thank you, Mr. Sumter. We may have questions for you again.
President Cordero, did you want to go with two minutes? Because we now have a total of 21 speakers with our, the next item with E2. Should we go with three minutes?
Well, let's continue with three for this item, but if people don't need their full three, we'd appreciate any time we can save.
Madam President?
Thank you.
To get the ball rolling in the spirit of Mrs. Parker, can I make a motion? Can I second her motion and get it on the table?
Well, I have not made a motion.
Oh, I thought you did.
But I will, I can make a motion to get it on the table, and that will move things along. I'll move that we continue the outreach coordinator and consultant position through the end of 2011-2012.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. So now, the motion is on the table for us to continue this position, and we will invite our public speakers to comment. And if you just want to say you are in support of this, you can keep your comments brief, but we will call you up and give you your time at the podium.
We have Brandon Valen, followed by Adrian Alaka, followed by Evan Pixley. If you'd like to come forward, you have three minutes, but...
I am Adrian Alcala-Tuck, on behalf of the DP Students, and it's 32 of us, and we appreciate having Ismael Huerta around to have us have an outreach, to teach us, and want us to better our lives and pursue a college career to better our future.
Thank you.
I'm Evan Pixley. I'm in 11th grade at Dos Pueblos. I've been in his program since ninth grade. I've seen it grow with a lot of students, and I've seen a lot of students be, like, successful. And he just gives us really good advice and, like, helps us apply ourselves and teaches us that our choices that we make determine our future, and it's just really important, the choices that you make, so.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brandon Valen. Ismael Huerta has become a very important person in my life, someone that can support me. He has been there to help me academically and return to a public high school. He has also acknowledged me about what, right and wrong choices I can make in my life. With his help, I've stayed out of trouble and will be getting on probation really soon. His program encourages me to go to school and become a better student. I know, I now know what I want to do and where I want to go with my life. Thank you, Ismael. Please keep this program running for you. It has not only helped me change my life, but many others, and hopefully a lot more to come.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rosalinda...
Thank you very much for coming and speaking to us.
Rosalinda Palacios, Teresa Laura Lewis, and Blanca Palacios.
Hola, buenos dias. Mi nombre es Rosalinda Palacios. Si hay una persona que me pueda interpretar, por favor?
Yes.
Mi nombre es Rosalinda Palacios. Estoy aquí para apoyar a Ismael Huerta. Mi hijo está con él dos años. Quiero saber si el programa se va a establecer todo el año. Porque él ha ayudado a mi hijo.
And I'm here in support of Ismael Huerta because my son's already been with him for two years, and I would like to know if the program's going to continue for the whole year.
Ha ayudado a mi hijo a superarse como ser humano y como estudiante, y este, lo ha tenido muy ocupado. Gracias a Dios. No andangas, buen pandillas.
Yeah, he's made a better human being out of my son, and he's helped him, and he's made him a better student, and thanks to him, he's... a better student, and thanks to him, he's not in any gangs or hasn't gotten into any trouble.
Y espero que continúe en este programa porque le has ayudado mucho joven, en donde más a mi hijo, a muchos he conocido por parte de él. Y muchas gracias a Ismael Huerta. Ha sido un ser humano muy lindo.
And I hope that you continue with this program because thanks to him, he's not only helped my son, my son, but many other young people that I've met through him, and I want to thank him for being such a wonderful human being.
Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Gracias, señora.
First of all, thank you for your limited time. My name is Blanca Palacios. I'm a student at Santa Barbara City College and graduated from San Marcos High School in Oi. San Marcos High School is a place where I grew up as a person and as a woman. Sorry, I'm really nervous. Today, I'm here to talk in behalf of Ismael Huerta. It took a single, it took one single conversation to figure out the type of person he is. To me, Ismael is one of the few persons here in Santa Barbara that will actually take his time and get to know some of the youth. He has not only become a mentor to these teens, but also a friend in which they can trust. Ismael, a difference from all of you sitting behind that desk, has actually taken his time to give that little push that teens need to open up and let their dreams run wild. Think just for a moment, how many of you behind that desk have given out the personal numbers to a teen? Probably none of you. Does any of you has had a one-on-one with any teen? Most likely, no. And Ismael has done these things. Some of the things that the talk last meeting said, how Ismael has impacted their life, but he has not only impacted these teenagers' life, but also their parents' lives too. Because as you can see, even parents are here today to support him. I know what a teenager's life can be and how hard it gets. I lost three friends because game bye. Sorry. After these losses, two people entered my life, and are still here for me. Sheriff Ali from the Santa Barbara Sheriff Department, and Ms. Harbor-Hartman, a counselor at Santa Barbara High School. These two people became my motivations, and the ones that taught me to dream big, and the ones that gave me that little push that every teenager needs. Ismael is doing the same thing for these teenagers, and not you, and not you want to take it away. Ismael has a family, and I bet he has many other responsibilities, but different from the school board, he has still make the time for the youth. Ismael is one of the few persons that has his eyes wide open and tells teenagers what's really going on in this community. It's something that not everyone does. Most people rather turn their backs and pretend that everything's just fine when in reality, many things are going wrong, starting with you, the district, the ones who take away a brilliant, special person like Ismael. Take a look at the post placed on the wall behind you. If you really want the best for the students, think twice before making the wrong decision, which is taking Ismael's job away. And with that said, thanks again for your limited time, and to Ismael, I just have to say that you're not alone. And just as we always say, si se puede. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Laura Lewis?
Good evening. I am the Community Outreach Coordinator from San Marcos High School. I am really proud of the work that Ismael does, and I just come here to bring you a message from the students and from our parents' community. Every Thursday, they come to my office and they say, "Ms. Lewis, at what time Ismael is coming?" And I, I told them when he is going to come. When they knew that his position was going to be close, they approached me and say, "Ms. Lewis, tell us what we need to do to raise money to pay his salary." It means a lot. What Ismael does for the students is to bring them hope. I echo what the parents and the students already told you. It has been a privilege to work with him. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
That concludes public comment on this item.
Ms. Cordero, may I comment?
Yes.
Just by way of future funding, we're working with Dr. Freus, as you know, to write similar positions into grants that the community is applying for because our position all along has been that we need more workers like this. In fact, we'd like to see one at every school, and we spread Ismael Huerta pretty thin as it is. So we'll continue to do that.
And I, I also would like to clarify that I don't think the Board has at any time expressed any desire to cut this position. We have mostly expressed desires to find funding to keep it. So just for that clarification, but I just wanted to take a quick minute to explain why I support this position so strongly. One of them is, was alluded to earlier. I was around when Ross Castro was working in our schools, and he was really instrumental in turning the lives around of a lot of young people who were going down the wrong paths. And at the time that we were considering this position, Michael Gonzalez was in the district, and he also had known Mr. Castro. And we recognized that Ross had been a very unique person and that it would perhaps take another very unique person to be able to do that job again, that it possibly wasn't just the position, but that it also involved the person who was in it. And I was very supportive of the position, but I was a little skeptical that we actually would find another person who could replicate the kind of success that Ross Castro had had. And I am really thrilled that I feel like we have found that person. We have students who are feeling very inspired, who really have seen changes in their lives and their outlooks. And one of the things that, that I recall from four years ago was the meeting we had at La Casa where there was a long line of young people addressing the Board and reminding us that they live with pressures and conflicts and fear and needs that were not being met every single day. And they were saying, why did it take such a tragedy for anyone to pay attention to them when they had been asking for this for so long? And so I really feel an obligation to those young people who were there last night, that night, to support whatever we can to, you know, demonstrate that we heard them and that we don't want to wait for another tragedy. We want to address those needs while we can. So I will definitely support this. Mr. Herron?
This program is far more than one person. Is this cost, including the other parts of the program, or is this the cost for the, the one position?
This was to include salary benefits and, and additional costs for the field trips to the college and other locations like that. Am I correct? Good.
Okay, so it does include enough to make the program work?
Yes.
Thank you.
But, but it doesn't include other outreach workers?
No, no, but he has, he will have tools to work with that he's had in the past, as far as trips and that kind of thing.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, then I think, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Lamong?
Thank you. And I would like to say that I've actually known Ismael for a little while now. We were colleagues through a lot of the college-going initiatives, and I, I really appreciate, I think, the Board, the district, and the community's support to have a sustained program that's going to address this issue. Through the time here, and reflecting on my own experience as a local student, we've seen this come in waves, as Ms. Parker has said, and I think it's really important that even when things do get better, we don't forget that what makes them better are the programs and the people who are ensuring that they're working on some of these issues. And of course, I do appreciate the college-going aspect that's been put into this because I think it's much more than just support. It's really about opportunity, about jobs, about next steps for a lot of our students. So I think all of the students, the parents, and the staff members who really spoke out and were here in support. So thank you all.
Okay, you speak in?
The students this evening and actually last week, and the emails and letters we've gotten, I think, really say it all. I do want to echo what my fellow Board members have said about the commitment of continuity, because if you offer support services and take them away, that's not a very good message to send to people. So I think this is one of the large reasons why this is so important, along with the individual who's providing these services. I'd also like to just mention the partnership we have with UCSB and Dr. Rios's involvement in this program because I think that's really strengthened the, the program as well. So I'm fully supportive of this, and it sounds like all of us are.
Yes, it sounds like we're ready for a vote. So we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, abstentions, motion carries 5-0. So thank you very much. I know Mr. Huerta will be happy to know that he actually has a salary for the next coming year. Unfortunately, we've had him on tender hooks on and off for his entire tenure with us, so I'm glad that we at least have a year commitment for him. So thank you, and thank you to all of your students who came and took the time to speak to us. So with that, we will move on to our next item, which is our big-ticket item tonight, the third reading and approval of the Fiscal Solvency Plan and Deliberations Regarding Budget Reductions for Fiscal Year 2011-2012. I know this is a discussion that we have all been gearing up for and at the same time dreading. So we will have Dr. Sarvas introduce it, and then we will get down to work.
Let's get right into it. Eric Smith, our Deputy Superintendent, will lead this discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvas. What we have before us here is the third revision to the Phase Five of the Fiscal Solvency Plan. And as you know, the Board has identified, or will have to identify, $10 million worth of budget reductions for the 2011-2012 fiscal year. We've revised the plan since last week, within a couple of days. I know I was praised for my communication, but I, we had a few typos in this one. It's not my best work as far as that, and so we'll go through and correct those, but we were in a hurry. So in any event, we revised the plan to basically add items, edit items, modify items, in some cases, delete them. As customary, we use strike through to show deleted items and underline to show adds, additions, or modifications. Pursuant to the Board Agenda item, what we'd like to try and do is identify $10 million in reductions, including negotiable items, $10 million in items excluding negotiable items, develop a plan to restore items in the event that we have funding that becomes available in the next months, and also to identify those cuts, if any, that shouldn't be restored. So what I'd like to do is walk you through the changes to the plan, and then we can have a discussion from there. So the first item, if you go to page two, there was a request to identify items that are negotiable versus non-negotiable items. So we thought the most appropriate place there was to change the plan assumptions and indicate that throughout the body of the text, that if an item was negotiable, we would designate it with an asterisk. Moving on to page six, regarding our discussion of 9th grade class size reduction, we deleted some of the text there. We're still just talking about a potential shift of FTEs, and what you have is a appendix that was omitted on the dais here, is a diagram that shows the number of FTEs that are funded by Measure H, including 9th grade math and foreign language and other electives. So there was kind of an erroneous reference to Exhibit B twice, and so this is what this one looks like. Yeah, the one that Robin's holding up. So that actually is tied to that. We're calling it, I guess, B1 and B2 now. So does everybody have that piece of information? Okay. So, and then the second item, which was the old Exhibit B, kind of gives you a little bit more descriptive explanation with respect to what's contained in the Tier Three categoricals. However, since nothing is easy, you'll see there's a number of those people were hired in under other programs, and what you're seeing is Human Resources has notated where they were hired in, but it's not where they're actually being paid from now. So all those people are being paid out of Tier Three categoricals, although it might say Parcel Tax, or EIA, or Partnership Academy, which are both two-tier categorical, Tier Two, Tier Two categoricals. When we run it in the financial system, they're all in Tier Three. They didn't happen to be hired in there, and those changes were not reflected in Human Resources, but that's actually where they're being paid from in the payroll system and budgeted to in the financial system. Everybody got that one? Okay. Okay, so as we move on...
Yes, I do have a question.
Sure.
In the body of the document in B, you talk about if we want to exclude GATE and CalSafe and YSS. But I don't see any of those in this list of categorical.
I think, let me go back here. What we did there was, if you look at the old diagram that we had in the last one, it did show those programs, and I think we just tried to identify the teachers that were nondescript prior with the course offering.
So all the ones here that say we might want to exclude aren't included on this Exhibit B?
Yeah, that Exhibit B, it doesn't show you everything that's, it's not exhaustive, is what I'm telling you. So you have to look at these items. You have to look at them in conjunction. So rather than lump sum this like we did last time, we kind of broke it out. So in the event the Board wanted to pick and choose items, they could do that. And as you could see, that if you took all of that off the top, then your savings on that item would be reduced by about $762,000. So moving on, on page 10, we have the elementary and secondary numbers inverted there. They should be reversed, but the total is correct. I'm not sure how that happened. On page 12, the Board asked us if we just looked at potentially increasing K1 as opposed to 2, 3. We kind of talked about some of the operational constraints of doing that in the event the flexibility period isn't extended indefinitely. So we thought what we'd show you is if we just raised class size in Grade 3 rather than the K1 and 2. So what you see there is the savings is not as significant, and that's identified in the underlined section in the last paragraph. Moving on to page 13, with respect to the reducing the number of credits, boy, this got much more complex than I think anybody thought it was going to be. We really kind of thought we should take this off the table because we think it really deserves further study. We're concerned about unintended consequences if we tried to implement it too quickly. What we're recommending is that we convene a committee to study it and come back with a recommendation in the spring for implementation going into the 12, is that 12-13 fiscal year? 12-13 fiscal year. An item that was added was U on page 15, which is achieving parity among comprehensive high schools. We actually have different numbers in the body of the text and actually in the recommendation or the bold, the bold-faced area. We, we actually were trying to arrive at what methodology we're going to use, and I know Board Member Parker had some involvement. So we took, we took the conservative and took the lowest dollar value number. So, but that did not get changed where it says 680. That number should have been changed to 548 in the body of the text that's underlined.
So the value... You said the, the 548 is the correct number?
That's correct, and you'll see a reference to 680 in the last line. That should be changed to 548. Although I probably have a Board member that wants to beg to differ with me, but... So in any event, we're moving on to page 16. This is a reduction of one administrative position at the district office. The, the number is lower than you would expect because the implementation of it would be deferred, and we would have to backfill that. deferred and we would have to backfill that. Some of those functions could just not be done away with, so we'd have to bring probably a confidential or classified employee to do some of those. And so, you don't have the total savings that would accrue to the elimination of a total position. And then the last item was the reducing Board Member compensation and we decided the ed code and what's going on here and also the Board Bylaw that says the Board Member shall receive stipend. So, in the event the Board wanted to reduce that amount, they would have to either voluntarily do it or modify the Board Bylaw. A couple of other things. We have additional attachments and the added text refers to them. Probably the one and the most significant one is the attachment that's assigned to Item AA and that's the School Services of California Study that was done in April of 2008. Among other things, it shows you comparatively how we stacked up administratively against like-size, like-type districts. And that's in '07-'08. So, I know some of the Board Members have seen this because they were on the Board when it actually occurred, but I'm guessing at least three of you have not probably seen it because I think unless you saw it when you were participating or observing. So, in any event, I think it contains some useful information relative to our administrative efficiency, which Board Member Herron kind of already alluded to earlier. So, our task is really set out in the Board Agenda item, which is, you know, first off, the most challenging is trying to identify the $10 million in cuts. Obviously, it's easier to get there with negotiable items. If you start excluding the negotiable items, it's much more difficult. I'm not sure how the county office is going to feel if the majority of those are negotiable items, but we've got to arrive there however we can get there. And as you'll see, that $10 million figure is figured into our multi-year projection in the next item, which is the certification of the second interim report. So, I guess I'd ask if there's any questions or comments with respect to what's contained in the revised plan.
Board Members' questions? Ms. Parker?
I guess I do have one question and that is, your recommendation was different this time than we'd seen in the past. And it recommends cuts equalling $10 million, including negotiable items, and then there's this new piece, cuts equalling $10 million excluding negotiable items. When we look at the list, if we exclude negotiable items, then essentially we have to do everything else and we have to do it to its most extreme. What I would like to know is, given the uncertainties in terms of unification and ballot measures in June, I mean frankly, I'm hoping that we end up not needing to do anything that's on this list or very few things.
I think we're all hoping.
Because I know that there are some things that we would choose to do anyway, but the majority, the hard, hard things. Would it be possible for us to do, to make the cuts equalling $10 million that include negotiable items now? And then in the future, if there are issues when we see if unification, if there's a problem with unification, if there's problems with negotiations, can we, could we come back to that at a future time? I mean, I know that we would have to notice all the classifieds.
Right.
Before May, but would it be possible perhaps in May to readdress this if needed?
Yeah, I think you could do that because you've already served the certificated notices. You'd have to go forward with notifying classified, but you could hold that second list in a bay, kind of in a parking lot per se, until we saw what the disposition of the unification would be. I was on the phone with the CDE consultant yesterday and he told me that the waivers will go to the state board meeting in May, which is early May. I know that the county committee's staff is trying to convene the county committee. I don't know if they've made contact with you and that or not, but last I heard, they couldn't find their chairperson. I don't know, you know? But I think they will find their chairperson and they will convene. I got this sense that they felt at a staff level that the petition was sufficient. But, you know, until the county committee convenes, and I know that the county committee or the county superintendent wants them to have public hearings in each of the affected districts, which in my mind are not affected because they've opted out, but that's a semantic argument. In any event, until we get through all that, we don't know it's a done deal. So, there are still some things that we have to overcome, but we could do that and we could revisit it in early May. And by that time, we will know whether the proposal to extend the temporary taxes is out of the legislature and heading to the statewide ballot. So, we'll know some of our fate and we'll have a little bit more certainty whether we're at, you know, 4.5, 5.6, whatever the number is, and hopefully it'll be a reduced number from $10 million.
Well, I would personally strongly prefer to only create that second list if it's needed and in the future.
I would like to echo that because that was going to be my question too, whether we could, well, exactly what you just said, whether we could hold off making some of those other decisions. But I also want to just address the question that you raised. As far as the county committee is concerned, we have been notified that there's likely to be a meeting very soon.
Okay.
We do not have one set, however, at this time.
Okay.
And I will not be voting on this item, so.
Okay. And another thing I just thought of is with respect to the County Education Office, the County Education Office review of our multi-year, I think as long as they have the assurance that you'd have the ability to go back and make those changes in May, I think we could move forward on that basis if need be.
My suggestion, and Board Members can tell me if they have a better suggestion than mine, was to simply walk through these quickly once through and maybe we should take public comment first, but let me just finish this thought, and see which ones we might all be in agreement with very quickly so we could put those on the table immediately. And then go back and take time on the ones that we, you know, really need some discussion on. So, after we take public comment, we'll come back to that idea. Ms. Parker?
Well, my suggestion would be that that actually be our list of cuts that should not be restored in the future because those may be things that we have strong agreement on and we could just put it right on that list, right off of that. Something to think about.
How many speakers do we have on this item?
Fifteen.
Okay, so, that will not allow us to have three minutes each, but we will try to go with two minutes each. That still puts us a little over the 20 minutes that we say we allot for each item, but we'll, I think we'll live with it because this is an important item. So, we'll give each person two minutes. For anyone who wants to speak on this item, now is the time to submit your speaker form. I know we had a little mix-up last week, but this time we're going to adhere to our closing of the comments because we need to know how much time to give each person. So, if there's any coming forward, please bring them forward now. Otherwise, we will assume that the speakers, speaker's clips are closed for this item. Okay? All right, then we will assume we just have these 15 speakers on this item.
Okay, we have Isaac Wright, followed by Nancy Matheson, followed by Paul Rooney. And if you want to come up and I'd like to ask everybody to kind of line up so that we can move through this more quickly. So, you have two minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Isaac Wright. I'm a student, I'm a junior at San Marcos High School, and I came here to talk about the budget cuts. So, I learned that some of the programs that are considering being cut or the stipends that are going to be removed include mock trial and leadership. And I'm on the mock trial team at San Marcos. We're actually in the middle of our county finals to move on to state as we speak right now. Our defense team's competing against Dos Pueblos. And one of the reasons I love San Marcos is because of these extra programs. I did mock trial this year and it's been a great experience. I feel like I've learned a lot about the law, about what I want to do later in life, better public speaking skills, and I've really had a great time also with journalism. Wonderful program that I also took this year. And it's really, the thing that makes, the thing that makes our school a place that students want to go, students want to learn at, is because of these programs. And if we cut these programs, if we reduce it to just programs that are absolutely required to graduate, then what do our students have to look forward to going to, to going to at school? And I wholeheartedly support the teachers that run these programs because they are doing a great thing for the students. And I would strongly urge the Board to not cut these programs. Thank you.
Can I just ask, so you said San Marcos and Dos Pueblos are competing right now?
As we speak.
You probably want to get back.
I would, yes.
And you both, you tied for first place?
Yes, for the second year running. It ended up being a dead tie at the championships on Saturday. And so, this year, we're having a runoff. So, it's our defense team versus Dos Pueblos's prosecution. It's sort of late, but I would encourage any of you to go.[1261.15][1261.15](LAUGHTER).
Okay. Well, thank you and good luck to all of you.
Thank you very much.
Nancy Matheson, followed by Paul Rooney, followed by Nancy Tobin.
Good evening, School Board. And boy, I do not envy any one of you tonight and the position you're in and the cuts you have to face. And I know that we're all just, we're all so hopeful that this is just a temporary blip and that our students will not be touched by these hard economic times. I, you know, we have so much to be grateful for and I think so much to be hopeful for. And I'm speaking for the Elementary Instrumental Music Program. And I'm speaking more as looking forward to the future because I understand that we have to do, you have to do, whatever it is you have to do in the best interest of our students tonight. But in looking forward, I really want to ask that we have, we have come so far. We have come from when I was first approached back in, I think it was 2003, Karen Dutton and I were approached and asked to propose a comprehensive K6 music program, not just continuing with the pull-out program that we had for our fourth through sixth graders in which 750 students from the district participated, but a comprehensive program that was aligned with the California State standards for the performing arts. And when Karen and I proposed it to the district and also to the Santa Barbara Education Foundation, they immediately loved it, but they said.
Thirty seconds.
We can't afford it. Well, we're doing it now and we have so much to be proud of, so much. And we have so many entities supporting us. I just want to ask that, moving forward, when it comes to deciding how to staff this program, that we fully staff it so that we can do our best for the students. We ran on one staff member less than we had hoped for this year just so we could buy instruments, and I'm hoping that we can add that staff member in next year. Thank you.
Paul Rooney, followed by Nancy Tobin, followed by David Holmes.
Once again, I'm honored to be speaking before you. I know you've had a, you've got quite a job to do. In light of the current financial difficulty you're posed with tonight, it is my duty as President of our CSEA Chapter 37 to ask for fairness and equality in whatever you decide to do. As you already know, the cuts are deep. We trust our governor's agenda and unification will be successful and all this pain and agony will go away. Be fair when you bring back staff. Include classifies as an equal manner. If you bring back teachers, please bring back classifieds. This has not been the picture we have seen in the past. We all, meaning teachers, support staff, and management are in this together and need each other's support. As a leader, I have to face my fellow CSEA Chapter 37 members and hear all their sad family stories when they get the bad news. Who will I be able to face and look into their eyes and tell that their jobs are safe? I will continue to advocate for that day. We are here to negotiate. Thank you.
Good evening, Members of the Board and Dr. Sarvas. I am Nancy Tobin, Library Trainer for the Elementary District. I am accompanied by the Elementary Library Technicians, united in delivering this message to you. My goal tonight is not the Orwellian, "Don't do it for me, do it, don't do it," excuse me, "don't do it to me, do it to them." Instead, my hope is to provide some historical perspective and identify consequences as you consider reductions in library services to students. Six years ago, under similar financial hardship, your predecessors eliminated all eight credentialed library positions assigned to elementary campuses. Since then, part-time library technicians supervised by one credentialed librarian have staffed our elementary libraries. Today, we support weekly class visits, allowing students to explore the library and check out books. We organize book fairs to encourage reading while generating cash for library supplies and books. We participate in annual book-related events, and most importantly, we promote the love of reading. Last year, we were given the added challenge of barcoding over 20,000 textbooks and implementing a textbook circulation system to help meet state mandates. The current proposal to reduce our part-time staff as much as 30% would be a serious blow to student services. For example.
Thirty seconds.
Textbooks could not be checked out to students and teachers in a timely manner. Libraries will open later and close earlier at the end of the year. Classes would not be able to visit the library weekly. The proposed budget would also eliminate the only credentialed librarian in the Elementary District. Cutting this position is akin to removing the captain from the ship. The technicians would be expected to work without a professional, without professional supervision by a credentialed librarian, and there would be no one to assume these responsibilities. In summary, our libraries have already accepted the challenge to provide quality student services despite added responsibilities and reduced budgets.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.[1652.01][1652.01](APPLAUSE).
David Holmes, followed by Unda Grand, followed by Maria Amesquito.
Hi, David Holmes, San Marcos High School Performing Arts. Boy, I've been before this Board many times in my 27 years. We all recognize just really how bad this situation is. As I look at the proposed budget cuts and I see cuts to my colleagues in the library, cuts to librarians, cuts to counselors, when I see a 5.4 cut in pay for teachers across the Board, a reduction of stipend, elimination of programs right and left, it seems to me, and maybe because I'm in these shoes, that the cuts are heavily on your professionals in the classroom. I think you'd go a long way by issuing reduction in force papers to your whole staff, to your superintendent, to Mr. Smith, to this table of people here, to all of the people in the district office, so that they at least get a sense of how that feels. This revolving door of temporary teachers on temporary, teachers on temporary contracts, boy, it's shameful. There isn't a teacher on a temporary contract that can count on anything. Longevity in this district, forget about it. Investing in this community, it's a terrible situation.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. I want to say that if these cuts have to be made, when you offer a district office cut that totals $40,000, it's embarrassing and it's insulting. One of my colleagues, well, enough said on that. I have to say, right at the very, I know I'm out of time, but Isaac Wright, who was here, that young man, forgot to tell you that he's also Heather Sett in our musical, Me and My Girl, that opens in May. And I never miss a chance to plug a show at San Marcos High School. And I never missed a chance to plug a show, uh, at San Marcos High School. And I hope you all come out and see that because I, I, you know, I don't know how long we can keep it all going with less and less and less. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Unda Grand, followed by Maria Amesquito, followed by Ruben Gill.
Good evening, board members. My name is Linda Grand and I thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the elementary library technicians. I also don't envy your position. I realize that you don't want to make any cuts to our schools, but want you to please consider the following. If you believe that literacy is the key to success in life, you will not dismantle the library, which is the heart of every school. Literacy is necessary for school's success. The best way to learn to read is to read, read, read. Many of our students in the Santa Barbara schools do not have books to read at home. There is not a public library on the west side of town. So the public school libraries are the libraries for the west side residents. It's essential for our schools to offer reading material. This reading material must be catalogued, shelved, and circulated and repaired. We need staff who understand the Dewey Decimal System to manage the school's collections and to teach students the lifelong skill of finding books for pleasure and research. As shocking as it sounds, the majority of teachers do not know how our libraries are organized. They cannot steer their students toward books they want and need and have no idea how to repair, shelve, and circulate them. Each library has approximately 12,000 books. If each book costs $20, the value of our books is equal to $240,000 for one library. Does the school district want a valuable asset such as this to go unsupervised and uncared for? Library techs have been given the added responsibility of test, textbook distribution beginning this last fall.
Thirty seconds.
Approximate value of textbooks at each site is $150,000. This collection needs to be managed and cared for. At Harding School, we have 12 laptops in the library, more expensive equipment. If you reduce the hours of the library technician, who will oversee the care of these expensive assets? Speaking of reducing library tech hours, if our hours drop below 20 per week, we will not be entitled to medical coverage. Our workload increases each year. We pay much more-
Thank you, Ms. Grand.
...insurance each year. And each year, we have our income reduced. Um, thank you very much. Uh, we-
Thank you.
...serve the entire school. We serve students, teachers, and the community.
Buenas noches. Soy un, soy madre de tres niños, um, de los cuales, uno de ellos tiene necesidades y yo vengo en apoyo de las enfermeras. Y yo creo que no solamente de las enfermeras. Sorry. Okay.
Good evening. I'm the mother of three children and one of those children is, um, a special child that needs the, you know, the help of the nurses. So I'm here to support the nurses.
Sí. Ustedes se han preguntado cómo va a afectar a las escuelas y a nuestros niños si ustedes hacen el recorte de las enfermeras y de las asistentes. Quién va a referirlos a los dentistas? Quién va a checar, a referirlos a los doctores? Quién van-
Have you asked yourselves what's going to happen if you, if you cut the nurses and the assistant to the nurses? Who's going to refer children to the dentist and make all the other referrals to the doctors and different referrals that the children need made?
O quiénes hacen los monitoreos médicos, las medicinas? Los niños con di, con diabetes, sillas?
Yeah, and who's going to monitor the, um, medical needs of the children and the children that are diabetic and children that suffer from seizures, asthma attacks, um, allergic reactions, broken bones, head injuries, immunizations, toileting, emergency disasters, um, shed plans, concerns of parents?
Mi niña, les voy a poner un ejemplo. Mi niña tiene dos clases de sillons y, uh, en un día en la escuela tuvo una convulsión. Estando en clase, la maestra no supo qué hacer. Y ella lo dijo honestamente, "No supe qué hacer." Hasta que no paró y la mantía a la enfermería. ¿Quién la so, quién la ayudó?
For instance, my daughter suffers from two different types of seizures and she had a seizure during, um, the time in her, in the classroom. And the teacher was very honest with me and told me that she had no ideas to what to do when that happened. Um, she went into convulsions and then she had to refer her to the nurse and she was honest with me and told me she had no idea what to do until she was referred and seen by the nurse.
Y yo me he apoyado en las enfermeras. Ellos me han ayudado bastante con mi niña, los doctores especialistas neurólogos, con todos los servicios que ocupan.
Yeah, and I rely a lot on the nurses for my daughter because they've, they've actually helped me, you know, with the doctor referrals, the neurologist, and all of the different, um, medical needs that she has.
Por favor reconsideren todos los recortes que van a ser aún los maestros, aún los de música, de arte, aún los, um, um, los consejeros. Mi niña, la mayor, se ha apoyado en ellos. Asistentes, todos vamos a salir, uh, como se dice, um, saldremos afectados, maestros, padres.
Please reconsider all of the cuts that you're going to make, not only to the nurses, but to the teachers. This is going to affect everyone. We're all going to be affected by this, parents, students, everyone's going to be affected.
Thank you, thank you very much. Ruben Gill, followed by Michelle Melendez, followed by Elizabeth Kristin.
Hello, board. My name is Ruben Gill. I'm a counselor at Santa Barbara High School. It is unimaginable that we as counselors would find ourselves on the chopping block again after the devastating blow we received just two years ago. Two years ago, we lost nine counseling positions and the counselor-student ratios increased from 300. And these again are approximate numbers, three, from 300 to 1 to 394. My current case load is at, uh, 420. Uh, I love what I do, but I'll, I'll be honest. We as counselors are working harder now to meet the demands and we're working harder than we ever have worked. Meeting student needs, providing parent outreach, ensuring students are eligible and ready to go to college, just to name a few. Our duties as counselors go on and on, yet, um, I think a lot of times we, we assume that counselors can somehow juggle a whole roster of duties and still effectively assist hundreds of students in planning their futures. School counselors play a critical role in inspiring young people and helping them achieve college admission, and specifically for the students who are social, economic, and cultural, and have those cultural challenges. We have a significant impact on the futures of the students we work with and, and we take that responsibility very seriously. I know you have the proposed number of 680 to 1 based on the California state average, but I, I want to enlighten you on, on a few things here that I, I don't think have been discussed at this point. The fact is that many of these other schools that are at these numbers are not relying solely on their counselors to fulfill all the duties that we as counselors perform here in Santa Barbara. Many dif, many districts have brought in guidance-
Thirty seconds.
...technicians who are overseeing scheduling. Other districts have hired support staff to manage clerical duties we perform, or have even brought in mental health support staff to assist students with personal and social challenges. Other schools have also had college counselors. And it's pretty impressive to know that we as counselors have been doing this with all that, without all that other support. And so I would urge you to consider, as you're looking at the chopping block, and I'm looking at all the three tiers, to, to please consider that, that we're doing way above and beyond with, with less. And so thank you for your time.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Michelle Melendez. I'm the lead nurse for the school district. Um, I'd like to take this opportunity to, to, to address the board one more time regarding cuts to the health services department. I know the current economical situation in our state is causing us to make cuts to our budget no one wants. However, this proposal of one nurse for 16,000 students is going too far. Although there is no mandate for school nurses, there is a mandate on many school health services. This is similar to the services of the school psychologist. There is also no mandate for a school psychologist, although their services in special education are mandated. The following services required to be provided by a school district can only be met through the services of a credentialed school nurse. Hearing and vision testing, scoliosis screening, assess and evaluate the health and developmental status of students, interpret the health and development assessment to teachers, administrators, parents, and other professionals directly involved with the student, develop, revise, and implement individual school healthcare plans, develop, revise, and implement medical 504s for such medical conditions as diabetes, seizures, severe allergies, and asthma. Refer the student and the parent to appropriate community resources. Supervision of the unlicensed assistive personnel providing the healthcare procedures, including the LVNs, which is also being proposed. Training of staff and unlicensed assistive personnel on specialized healthcare procedures, health counseling for staff and students, communicable disease control, and ensuring appropriate orders for all medications on our campus.
Thirty seconds.
Due to our improved medical services, more and more babies and children are surviving previously life-threatening diseases. This means we have more students with medical needs entering our school system. The number of students with chronic medical needs is increasing every year. Statistics show a national rate of 18%. Compare that with the national average of special education at approximately the same rate. Why are we not ensuring the medical needs of our students are not being met the same, to the, the same as we ensure the educational needs of those with special education qualifying conditions?
Thank you.
I want to be ensured that we stand behind our school model, excellence for all.
Elizabeth Kristin, followed by Tom Thomas, followed by Penny Jenkins.
Hello, members of the board. Thank you for letting me speak again. Before we make changes to the delivery and quality of care delivered to all students by the health services, I would ask that we collaboratively look at the following issues. Supervision, which is a necessary component of the care provided in the health office, the scope of practice of the office staff, the medical necessity of the school site, and cost effectiveness, and the training of the staff, last but not least. The experience of the health assistants we have in the offices as we speak. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Tom Thomas. I'm one of the three co-chairs of the Fighting Back Steering Committee, which is an arm of the Council on Alcohol and Drug Abuse. Uh, my two other co-chairs are Bill Saroni, Superintendent of the County Schools, and Andrea Serbin, who is the President of Santa Barbara City College. I came to Santa Barbara just under 17 years ago and about five years after that, I became a member of the Fighting Back Steering Committee. I learned immediately, because we used to have a dinner every year where we celebrated the youth, uh, youth services specialists, and we would have the services specialists talk and we'd have those that utilized the student, the YSSs, there to speak also. And it became very clear to me, in fact, the first year of those dinners, I believe I met John, who's the newly appointed, uh, principal at Santa Barbara Junior High School, and just shows you the type of people that go, that go into the, uh, YSSs. Uh, I have seen how they become the key point of contact in the schools. These are kids that, you know, are just sort of lost. They don't have strong family lives and what have you, and they just gravitate to the YSSs. We currently have eight YSSs in the Santa Barbara school district. Four of those are supported by $100,000 from the, uh, from the funds that the school district gives us.
Thirty seconds.
The other 700,000 are raised through YSS and other donations that, uh, the Fighting Back gets. It's a very important arm for young adolescents and it would be a shame to see this be let go, particularly when it's only one-eighth of the program that is being raised. So thank you very much for your support in the past and I look forward to it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Penny Jenkins, followed by Deborah Pentland, followed by Sylvia Gutierrez.
Hi, I'm Penny Jenkins and I've been around forever. I have been the project director of Fighting Back for 20 years. And when you say you want continuity, you've had continuity. You've had us for 20 years as your partner and we appreciate it. We appreciate Brian. We have appreciated his predecessors, Robin, who was the principal at Roosevelt when we started this. Um, anyway, our youth service specialists are an important part of the school community, do a good job, and we appreciate your support. I think you've heard from lots of teachers and lots of different people about what they do. They provide prevention, intervention, treatment, and aftercare by connecting kids with any kind of alcohol or drug problem to the Daniel Bryant Center, which Fighting Back also started, or to other programs. So thank you for your support. I look forward to continuing to work together and we'll miss Brian. He's been wonderful and, anyway, I'm sure we'll have someone else wonderful too, but thank you very much.
Good evening, board members. I know this is a difficult night and I'm just hoping to tie it together. We are a village. We are a school village. Children come each day to learn, but they don't just come with their brains walking through the door. They come with health, socioeconomic, alcohol and drugs, mental health, and learning problems. We at the school sites work with the whole child, with a whole team, because they do not check their issues at the door. Cutting counselors, teachers, YSS counselors, health assistants, librarians, nurses, and secretaries, maintenance, and even ground workers is like cutting a part of your team, like first base is gone, third base is gone, the catcher isn't there. Each day, these sta, staff people work beyond comprehension. I see it every day. The load is much higher than any of the reports I've read in the physical document. Counselors see way more than 3.2 people. Children come without healthcare, or mental health, or food, or bus money, sometimes without parents. Each day, we work together to try to provide them a safety net. I get a call from a counselor, he needs a 504 for a student who has cancer. I get a call from a health assistant, a ninth grader who's having surgery tomorrow thinks she's pregnant.
Thirty seconds.
I get a call from another high school that a high-achieving student has reportedly been hallucinating for the last five years. I can go on and on. The alcohol and drug stats are up, learning disabilities and 504s are up, our health issues of asthma, diabetes, pregnancies, seizures are all up. Eric has done an incredible job over this last few years financially. It's incredible what he's held together. But we need to be a whole team. We need our village. Please reduce the school year.
Sylvia Gutierrez.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I do want to commend Eric for his business savvy. Um, I am concerned about, um, I unders, I believe I understand why he wants to restructure health services to, but to gut it the way it's being gutted, gutted at this time, it's, it just seems unsafe for the students. We are, I'm at a year-round school. We start in the middle of, the beginning of July. Last year, um, this year, I found myself last summer, um, an autism program was started at our school. A district nurse was not invited to any of the IEPs. I found myself with an autistic epileptic child having a seizure. Mom had not been giving him the medication. We didn't even know he took medication. Um, the teacher didn't know what to do, no one knew what to do. Okay, so then I finally got ahold of the one nurse that was on call, but I basically used my experience and worked with the parent. Also, I had an incident. Um, there wasn't any nurse on call. There were 15 children who broke out with an unknown rash, all in the same classroom. I merely called 911 to get advice. I should have called the ER room to find out. Before we knew it, there's two ambulances at our hospital, at our school. And over the radio, they said there are 50 kids, an outbreak of something, and all of a sudden, it turns into this big thing, okay? No nurse was on call. Debbie lives right near our school.
Thirty seconds.
I begged her to come. She came. She got together with the public health. Nothing was resolved. Every doctor had a different diagnosis, but all children had to go home. We need nurses. Year-round schools go without nurses for a month and a half. We need health assistants. Do not do these cuts or this revamping on health services on the backs of the medically fragile. Please, think about them. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment on this item.